Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 21st, 2016. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together as a board to do the county's work, guide us as we try to do what's best for our people, be with our country's leaders, our military and their families, our law enforcement, fire and emergency personnel as they put their lives on the line every day for us. In your name we ask, amen.
The first order of business tonight is a public hearing for the consideration of the sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital at 1230 North Main Street in Waynesville, North Carolina to landmark developers for affordable housing. So at this point, I would recognize David Francis. You'll introduce your guest.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's well. First day of spring didn't come out exactly like I'd like to, but it is still pretty here in the mountains. For you, we have a public hearing this evening, but this public hearing is for informational purposes only. This was not required for the sale of the hospital, but due to the historic nature of selling the North Carolina's first hospital, we thought it was in the best interest of our citizens of Haywood County that we do give them one more opportunity to speak on the sale of the hospital. As you know, that we have entered into a option to sell the hospital to the North Carolina Preservation Society and also that in turn will then sell it to the Landmark Group for $200,000. Part of this to make the affordable housing aspect of this work, this hospital will be sold for affordable housing. The covenants will restrict the hospital sale for the housing will be for veterans, for seniors, and for the elderly and families that are with low income or moderate income need. And so with that, we will also contribute $450,000 loan that will be due with zero interest that will be due in 30 years, so the county will receive that money back at the end of the 30 years. So with that, I'd like to introduce John Stiltner with Landmark Development who has some information on where we are in the process so far.
Thank you, David. I'm appreciative and grateful to be back here again to speak in front of y'all. My name's John Stiltner. I work with the Landmark Group out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Used to work for the construction company that built their historical projects for 11 years and I've been on board with Landmark Development for three years myself, learning the ropes of how you take a historic building and you repurpose it into something that the community has need for. Been on the opposite end of it, building it and getting it done, but this is new and I'm excited about it. A little bit about the project. Total development cost is seven plus million to 7.1 million. The construction cost is five million. It will be, we will be developing 54 units, 33 one-bedroom and 21 two-bedroom units. The square footages of the one-bedrooms will range from 660 square feet to 850 square feet. The two-bedrooms will range from 900 square feet to 1,100 square feet. It being a historic building, not everything's the same and everybody kind of gets to be an individual because each unit's going to be a little bit different. Our targeting is for modern income families, citizens and veterans from as low as 17,000 a year to 35,000 a year up to three people. And then we can also qualify for people that per unit in the two bedrooms that could make more than that upwards of 35,000, 36,000. The project itself is currently, we're seeking the nomination to have the hospital put on the National Register of Historic Places. Washington DC meets in October. We have a wonderful historian who's starting that process and working on that application as we speak. So we're looking at late October to have the hospital put on the National Register, which in itself is a great accomplishment for the community and ourselves, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Anyone have any questions? This is the third or fourth presentation we've had about this, but we just want to make sure that the citizens have a chance to hear about it as it moves forward. And I've seen the timeline and we're looking at an August date, I think, for final approval.
We will, third week of August, the state of North Carolina will release their awards and we are very hopeful and confident that the project will get an award this year. It's very competitive and it's asking tax credit per unit. It's in a great location and there's a big need in Haywood for it.
There is.
So with, or in Waynesville, I'm sorry, for the project. So it's got everything on its side and as founder of our company, you said with enough or with public-private relationships, it's hard to stop that. Had a lunch this morning and this whole thing, just the feeling of it, being involved in other projects, this one just has that feeling that it's moving like a train. So we'll know in August and then we'll try to get it closed and under construction into December to February of next year.
We'll all keep our fingers crossed that the state awards it, so nothing's certain until they do.
Don't count your chickens, absolutely.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or observations with other data? Anything else? Okay. Is there anyone else present who would like to comment regarding this topic? Recognize Gavin Brown, Mayor of Waynesville. Gavin, welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to let the county know that the town of Waynesville fully supports this program. It's an opportunity for us to provide a service to the community. It also helps get something back on the tax rolls and most importantly, it provides an opportunity for us to save an historic building, something that I think this community takes heart in at most points in time. I've met with a developer on several occasions, in fact, had lunch with him today. They seem to be a very opportunistic, but at the same time, very reliable builder that will take care of this project. At seven and a half million dollars, it means substance to this community and I would hope that the county would go forward with this project. I would also like to assure the county that the town of Waynesville stands ready to provide in-kind funds to the project in the way of waiving of permits and assisting in facilities and infrastructure. But we are ready to go forward with this project and hope that the county does approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gavin, and appreciate the town stepping up their contributions as well. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll resume the business portion of our agenda. Next up is the public comment session. I have several people who have asked to speak. I will call you up in the order that I receive the card. First is John Wadsworth.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me comment tonight. Our county has some real issues that need to be addressed. It is public knowledge that our local schools are facing significant financial issues due to a reduction in student population of over 750 students over the last 10 years. The reduction in students alone has reduced funding to the schools over $5 million during that time period. The projected trend in student enrollment continues to go down in the foreseeable future, which means less money for our schools. In addition, approximately 56% of our students are on a free lunch program and recently the local paper stated that we have over 300 homeless students attending our Haywood County schools. I hope you agree that our future is in jeopardy if our children are not our number one priority, but I'm concerned that our actions show just the opposite. Do you think that 50% of our children on free lunches are better off since we built the new jail? Do you think that the 300 homeless children in Haywood County are better off since we built the new Justice Center? Do you think our funding situation at our local schools is going to be better if we build a new animal shelter? Remember, our actions, not words, establish our real priorities. I ask you, how does the current plan to construct an animal rescue shelter for 3.5 million and an EMS emergency management project totaling 2.3 million, which is 5.8 million between the two projects, help solve poverty and address the needs of our children in Haywood County? I ask you to do the right thing for our children. Put these projects on hold for at least one year until you first develop a comprehensive plan and solution that will result in these funds being better used to address the needs of our children. The first step of this plan should be to address job creation and economic development within our community. The best pathway out of poverty for our children is for the parents to have a well-paying job. The second step is to continue to make our excellent schools and vocational training available and accessible to all our children. Educating and preparing our children now is the best way to ensure that future children within our community will not be on a free lunch or even homeless. The third step is for all Haywood County leaders to pull together to solve this problem. This must start with the Haywood County Board of Commissioners and the school board working together to effectively harness their combined funds to solidify the foundation of our community by making the goals of economic growth and accessible education a top priority. As a community, we must make it clear that our children are our number one priority. So I hope you can see how our decisions today can have a very big impact on the future of our most valuable resource, our children. Please put our children's best interest ahead of spending for new government buildings. Children before buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. I would mention that some of the buildings that were mentioned, school buildings are paid for largely by lottery funds that can't be used for anything else. Article 40 and 42 sales tax are used, a portion are used for capital expenses and can't be used for operational costs. The EMS was paid for by a grant of E911 funds, which comes out of your phone bill each month. There's a little section among the million of the other things they take out. They take out a little bit for emergency management funds and those were used for that construction. So everything is not usually as neat as it would appear, so. Okay, next up is Connie Hewitt.
I'm Connie Hewitt and I'm president of Haywood Spay and Neuter. I'm chair of the Haywood County Animal Shelter Advisory Committee and a volunteer with Sarges and a few other things besides that. Many of us are in here tonight at this meeting from different animal welfare groups. We have Feline Urgent Rescue, Sarges, Duke's Animal Haven, Haywood Spay and Neuter, and Friends of Haywood County Animal Shelter. We're here because we want to thank you for moving forward with plans for new animal shelter. It is long overdue and very much needed. The homeless dogs and cats in Haywood County deserve a larger, healthier environment than what they have now. A separate intake section, ventilation, proper drainage, adequately sized kennels, and noise control will prevent animals from coming down with communicable shelter diseases that often end in euthanasia. It's not the dog or cat's fault that they end up in the shelter. It's the fault of people. Many end up there because their owners did not spay or neuter them to prevent unwanted litters or unwanted behaviors. Some wandered away from home and their owners never came looking for them. Other beloved pets were turned in because the owners have died or have taken seriously ill or fell upon hard times and could no longer support their pet. Others are surrendered because life happens, have to move or things change, and others are just part of this disposable mentality this nation has. Since people have caused this problem, it's up to us to provide a solution. This solution is a new shelter that can provide these animals with a healthy place and enough time to be adopted. The proposed new shelter with its welcoming appearance will encourage adopters to start their search for a new family member at the shelter. Right now, many potential adopters just do not want to enter our current shelter, thus cutting down the chance of cats and dogs getting out of there. Americans spent $60 billion on their pets in 2015. For every pet adopted from the new shelter, owners will be spending money at local pet shops for food supplies and toys, veterinarian clinics, groomers, boarding kennels, pet sitters, obedience trainers, and on and on. Yes, a new shelter will cost money, but it needs to be done right, be up to date, and meet current regulatory codes so that it will last into the future. It is a capital expense. Happy new owners, adopted pets, and local businesses will reap the benefits and Haywood County can take pride in its progressive attitude towards animals.
Thank you. Paul Jaeger.
Good evening, Commissioners, fellow citizens. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance regulating commercial outdoor shooting ranges. As I did during a recent time I addressed this commission, I'm going to quote Thomas Jefferson, who, among other things, said, "The government governs best that governs least." Certainly governing least would be not passing laws to rectify situations that do not exist. As other speakers have pointed out tonight, there are issues here in Haywood County that exist today that need addressing. We have no commercial outdoor shooting range planned in Haywood County. We have real problems to solve and we're spending time on an ordinance. I object. I think that's not a good use of our time as citizens of Haywood County. It is thought that this cannot be safe unless we have a county ordinance to regulate it. I would suggest that a private business opening an outdoor shooting range would have a significant legal liability that would drive them to make sure that it was operated as safely as possible. Furthermore, we might, in view of this ordinance, want to view the range locally used by law enforcement owned by Maggie Valley that's out near Delwood Road and the bypass, which fails to meet several of the requirements of this ordinance. If these things are required to make us safe, if that range doesn't meet those standards, if nobody's been hurt by that range, then perhaps these requirements aren't really necessary after all. Shooting stations and targets located a minimum of 300 feet from any property line. That doesn't happen at the law enforcement range. It also doesn't happen at the range down in Lake Logan. Warning signs. They're not at the law enforcement range and I'm pretty sure they're not down at Lake Logan. Distance from occupied buildings. The range here in Waynesville is certainly closer than that minimum distance from other occupied buildings. Fencing, I'm pretty sure they don't have that in Lake Logan and the local range does not meet the requirements of the ordinance that is proposed. So if it's really about safety, it sure doesn't look that way. I would urge the commission to urge their, to spend their time and effort on problems we have today that need solving and table this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Some of you may remember that a special call meeting for the 28th, next Monday, to have a public hearing on these ordinances. So if you have a comment at that time about those ordinances, that would be the appropriate time to make it. Mark Melrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. I also want to speak about priorities and what I see as, I would say misplaced priorities. I've been very involved in trying to stop the effort to close Central Elementary School where my daughter attends and where 234 other families have been disrupted by the sudden and unexpected closure of that by the Board of Education. As far as I can tell so far in my investigation, I have not seen any effort made by this board in conjunction with the Board of Education to try and solve a desperate funding problem that seems to be sprung on the public at the last minute with the public not finding out about it until January 11th and then the closing occurring one month later. I didn't hear any mention from this board about what it could do to try and address that problem. And what it can do is address that problem financially. What we hear from the Board of Education is that the board has no taxation authority, they have no funding authority, and that's true. But this board does have the ability to save Central Elementary School. It does have the ability to raise taxes. It does have the ability to change spending priorities. And what I hear is deafening silence from this board and it concerns me as a citizen, as a parent. I've had three other children go through public education here in Haywood County and Jackson County. And I think that these, what I heard from the other speaker and what I would echo is that the priorities, I understand that capital expenditures are different than day-to-day operating expenses, but money is money and what I've seen is that the money that's been allocated to the school has been done through this funding formula, which allows this board and I would say the Board of Education not to have to fight about it every year. But the problem with that, and that resolution does say can be revisited if conditions change. I would contend that conditions have changed. A pillar of this community, Central Elementary School, was closed with one month's notice, an education facility that's been here, one of the best in the county, well-raided across the state, with one month to allow us to figure out how to spend money appropriately. And in that timeframe, I think that what we hear is that the state, and I know the conservatives state government have cut funding, that's true, but if the state, that's a reality though, and you folks have the ability to raise property taxes, you have the ability to raise user fees, et cetera, you need to do it. $300,000 would keep Central Elementary School open next year. Conditions may be more favorable from a year. But what I read, and I understand there's a lot of people here about the animal shelter and I think I've got one minute, is that right? Is misplaced priorities. What I see is an animal shelter, when I ask for the records, public records, there's actually been a decrease in the number of stray animals, particularly in the areas of cats and kittens in the last four years. The numbers have gone from 700 and something to 300 or 400 and something. We have a more desperate need to take care of our children. I'm holding in front of you here the cuts that are coming to our schoolchildren next year in Haywood County. Ban program cut in half, travel cut in half, clerical positions at the school cut in half, remediation, the kids that need it most, cut by 51%. So let me just wrap up by saying that I would urge you to take your eyes off the next new shiny object, which is this three and a half million dollar animal shelter, and figure out how to spend and raise funds appropriately to take care of our children. If your child's sick, you don't buy a new boat. Thank you.
Okay. The only comment I'll make is that the decisions about education in Haywood County and all counties in North Carolina are made by the duly elected officials charged with that responsibility, that's the school board. They made a business decision in this case and I've seen no evidence that it was an incorrect decision. So that's their responsibility and they made a business decision that there simply were not enough children. And you know, remember in Haywood County, and I was from Finesbury Community, that school was closed. Crabtree School was closed. There's been Rock Hill. Many, many schools over the years, as demographics change, as population changes, as funding changes, schools close. And the school board is charged with making the best business decisions they can when they spend your money. So and I've been on the school board, I know Michael's been on the school board, Bill was a school superintendent. It's a tough job to balance competing needs in the education system. And you know, capital expenditures are different than operating expenses and $300,000 might keep a school open, that's one year, then it becomes 600,000, then it becomes 900, then it becomes 1.2 million. And at what point are you taking away from other educational opportunities by those kinds of dollars? So the school system made a business decision and they've not requested the Board of Commissioners to get involved in their business. And so therefore, I don't expect that we will. That's their jurisdiction. Okay, next up is Sarah Jane. I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Teague, okay. League, okay.
It's like the basketball league or the national football league. Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Jane League and I'm here today to speak on support of the new animal shelter. For those of you that don't know me, I grew up in Waynesville. I moved to Washington DC and spent my career working as a civilian employee for the federal government. With my husband, I returned home to retire in 2008. I believe that animals enrich our lives and touch our souls with their love and devotion. We as humans owe it to our animals to provide care and shelter to them when they find that they are in circumstances where they do not have the capability to help themselves. As a community, we need to be compassionate and provide a shelter for such animals. We need to give them a chance to find homes again. You as our commissioners, I believe, are doing that by pursuing the vision to have a new animal shelter. You have been diligent in identifying our needs and requirements for Haywood County to have a state-of-the-art animal shelter and one that is economically in keeping with Haywood County's development. This shelter will serve our community for many years into the future. The final cost is still to be determined, but I feel that you, our commissioners, will review and validate that that cost is not excessive based on the requirements and that Haywood County will be well-served with the new shelter. I know there are others here tonight who support this effort and at this point, I would like to ask them to stand. On behalf of all of us, thank you, Commissioners, for your leadership.
Next is Debbie King.
I'm Debbie King. I sent an email to four of the five commissioners before the last meeting and part of what I said was on your agenda, this was sent before your last meeting, on your agenda there is a request for a special called meeting for public hearings to consider three ordinances. Public hearings are typically held during the evening commissioner meetings. More than one year ago, the public was told, a rewrite of the emergency management ordinance would take place. That still has not happened. The definition of ordinance is an authoritative rule or law, a decree or command. Ordinances are something that should be carefully considered by both the elected and the people before action is taken. Typically, the information is available 10 days before the hearing. That is not enough time for the public to review three ordinances. In my opinion, one called special meeting to consider three ordinances is a disservice to the people and I asked that they be spread out and I didn't get any response from you. So I'm here today though, to talk about the Chapter 100 Ground Use Ordinance and the following are just some of my observations and opinions about this ordinance. It states that a violation of this ordinance shall be a class III misdemeanor. The penalty could be up to $500 and each day's violation shall be a continuing offense. Just a few of the prohibited activities on grounds, county grounds, include lighting without permission of the county manager. And it states that laying down of bedding for the purpose of sleeping. for the purpose of sleeping is prohibited. From the Washington Post article, "It's unconstitutional to ban the homeless from sleeping outside," the federal government says, and this is by Emily Badger, and I'm quoting, "Sleeping is a life-sustaining activity. It must occur at some time in some place. If a person literally has nowhere else to go, then enforcement of the anti-camping ordinance against the person criminalizes her for being homeless. Such laws, the DOJ argues, violate the Eighth Amendment protections against cruel and unusual punishment, making them unconstitutional. By weighing in on this case, the DOJ's first foray in two decades into this still unsettled area of law, the federal government is warning cities far beyond Boise and backing up federal goals to treat homelessness more humanely." And that's end of the quote. So we're being asked today to loan a company $450,000.
I believe your time is up, Ms. King. Okay, next up is Chris May.
I'm Chris May from Canton, North Carolina. I've been asked to come here today to speak a little bit about homelessness. My qualifications would be, one, I've been in Haywood County my whole life. Five years ago, I went to Asheville, Patton Avenue, opened up Sunrise Community Outreach to feed the homeless. We run buses, pick up the homeless, bring them down to our organization, look after them, five years' experience with these folks, and have learned a lot of things about it. I've been asked here today by the Community Kitchen, which I'm a member of the Board there, and Mountain Projects, to speak a little bit about homelessness. There's a lot of issues going on in this courtroom today that would affect that. First would be, first and number one would be education. My wife is an educator at Canton Middle School, math and science teacher, so I know the importance of good education. So when we talk about cutting education, we need to take these things seriously because they affect what I'm going to talk about here today. Number two, economic development and growth. As our economy seems to shrink, as our people leave us for some reason here in Haywood County, our tax dollars go away. So we need to look at a way to bring more good-paying jobs and a sustainable industry to our part of Western North Carolina, because that's the second, the second, hear me right, second cause of homelessness. People lose their jobs. I can tell you at the Sunrise Community Outreach, I've seen all levels of education, engineers, doctors, stuffy musicians, people with doctor degrees come through our place, they're in a homeless situation, they're in and out due to a bad economy. So it does affect everybody. We think that it only affects a small portion of our population, and those numbers are very inaccurate, and that's boots-on-the-ground, that isn't a government statistic, that's a gentleman that's lived it for five years, five years. So I'm here today on the new business, number 10, to support and look for approval for us before our issue in Haywood County gets further down the road, and I can promise you, if we don't step in front of it today, it will grow. Buncombe County has a paid homeless coordinator. They say they have 500 chronically homeless people in Haywood County. Well, I must serve 300 of them breakfast every Saturday, right along with the nine other people that do it right up the street that have the same numbers. So the numbers are skewed. From what I've seen, we roughly have 2,600 in Buncombe County. Our number's much smaller in Haywood County. How does that benefit us? It benefits us that we're ahead of the curve if we act now. We have to act now. So I suggest, you know, y'all can get a hold of me if you want to talk about reality, not stuff you read in a book, reality. I'm here, but I'm in support that we form our coalition now and get to moving on that before it becomes a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the number of folks who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else present who would care to address the Board? And again, the public hearings on the ordinances are scheduled for next Monday, and that's be the most appropriate time to make those comments. So, yes, did you care to speak?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. We've been here a while, Commissioner Swanger and the others of you. I didn't realize until this evening that, yes, there was a hearing on the shooting firing range ordinance. I want to thank you very much for working to protect the safety of people in Haywood County. As you all well know, until that thing, that shooting range comes up to your house or beside your house, you don't understand the impact of how that could affect your life. So I want to thank you again very much for speaking on this, on our behalf on this. I suspect you've written a good ordinance, and I look forward to reading it. Thank you.
Could you state your name for our records?
I'm sorry, Vicki Rogers, Francis Farm Road.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none, then we'll close the public comment session. Do any commissioners have any observations or comments they'd like to make, anything they've heard tonight?
Probably just want to make a couple of comments, you know, a little bit about education and the job creation or whatever. We're hard at work, along with the public schools, the community college, and the county here with economic development, working very diligently on what is needed to prepare our young children and our young people and our adults for the jobs that are available in Haywood County. We're also very diligently working, looking at trying to bring additional jobs in, constantly doing that. We have some very good relationships and working relationships with the schools and the community college, you know, identifying what needs, what is the training that our people need for the jobs that are available. We've also brought in all the industry that's in the county, sit down with their HR people and talk to them about what's needed in the county, and, you know, identifying the deficiencies. So we're hard at work and all that stuff. Also, you know, I talk with the school system quite often, very knowledgeable on what's going on with Central, you know, very aware. You've got two newer elementary schools within a mile apart that were only 60% at capacity, and with the moving of the kids to these two elementary schools, you're only up about 80%. You're at new facilities or newer facilities. So again, you know, with declining numbers and all, a business decision was there, was made. But, so I've just tried to address a few of the things that I've heard today.
Okay.
I guess would comment that education is, our Board of Education handles the issues with schools. We, I don't like for other boards to get into our business, and I don't want to get into their business. I think they're elected, they know the facts, they've studied it, and that's why they've come to the decision they have. And also, I also want to make a comment on our, the homeless situation in the county. One of the things that we've been able to do is with the Pathway Center, that has, we've been able to affect a portion of the homeless with having that shelter open. And just, I want to thank Sheriff Christopher, I think I saw him here earlier, but with his efforts, because what that's done, it's cut down the jail recidivism rate. I remember the sheriff came to our Board and was going to put, was asking for maybe to add space to the jail, which would have been a, they call them pods, it would have been a million dollars to add that to the, to the, to the, to their existing jail. We didn't have to do that. So because of that jail recidivism rate, the jail annex, our jail holds 90, the annex holds 40. The annex is empty most of the time now. He's able to keep that recidivism rate down from the faith-based programs that our churches help us with in that part of the homelessness. And it helps people, I was talking to a fellow this weekend that was, that had, I guess, helps with the program, and had even been in the program and had drugs, and he's talking about how it helps for prisoners to be able to go out and be able to, you know, it gets them out of that routine, it gets them into a productive routine. And the faith-based programs worked, and I just want to thank the sheriff for that. But that has saved our county so far, a million dollars. That's what a pod would cost, is $1 million. And by the efforts of our faith-based community and our sheriff's department, we've been able to put that expense off for a while. So I just want to congratulate them and point that out, and hopefully we can build on that with the other homeless issues that we have right now.
Okay.
Well, this is, this is why when you run for this job and you get elected, you don't realize how tough it's going to be until you have a meeting like tonight, and you have so many different issues come up that are so important to others. And I think Mark kind of pointed out that, you know, what are the priorities? Well, unfortunately, everybody has their own set of priorities, and different people have what's first and second and third, and so it's difficult for us to try to establish our priorities or the county's priorities, because we have to take the county people's money and utilize that and spend that money, and try to determine what the best priorities or the best interest of the county is. I'll just make a couple points of the comments that people made. We try to look at every building that we construct and see its necessity. The two comments about two older, two buildings that have been here a while now are the new jail, and unfortunately, at the time, that was a very important item. We had a jail that was deteriorating tremendously. It had a rickety, I don't know if you've been in one of those elevators where you close the door behind you and you push a bell, and the jailer at the top lets you go up and calls you up to go visit an inmate. It wasn't safe, and it wasn't secure. And it came right after a fire occurred, I believe, in Mitchell County, where it killed inmates, and they got sued. So that was one of the reasons we decided we probably need a new jail. The New Justice Center came about when one of our district court judges had to close the courtroom, one of our courtrooms. So we had one courtroom in Haywood County. And at that time, we had court here, we had court in Canton, we had court at the Daco Union Hall. So there's no question we needed court space. The county, the county commissioners cannot control who needs to file suits, who are defendants, who are criminal cases, what we need to prosecute in Department of Social Services cases, and so there was, it was necessary for us to have a courthouse. We run probably, there's probably at least three courts a day that go on in that courthouse I'm just pointing out that those aren't unnecessary items. I mean, sometimes we get up and we speak, and we just throw things out to say, hey, what about that? But they're not necessarily explained. There's no question that education is extremely important. Years ago, we developed that funding formula, and every year when we meet with the Board of Education, we ask them, are you happy with this funding formula? Is this okay? Do we need to relook at this? And of course, they always want to ask for more money, but you know where that money comes from? It comes from all the county taxpayers. They've been happy with that funding formula, do not want to change that funding formula, and also don't want to go back to the old way of doing things where they come and ask for each item. Now, some of the commissioners have spoken tonight and said, you know, we don't, we don't get into the decisions of the school board. And I think the way it used to be done, when the way the county used to fund the school board is, is they got involved in a lot of different items, and this place was packed. And so far, the two boards have worked good together that way. Now, I'm not opposed to looking at ways to fund education more and increase it, but right now, if you look at some of the, some of the way we're funding the schools and how we fund it as opposed to other systems in the state, we're doing pretty good. I think we're 20, what is it, 24th in the state in funding, and our schools are 15th. And that's out of how many?
115.
115. I think that's pretty good for Haywood County. I mean, would we like to be number one? Sure, but, I mean, I don't think you can say that that's bad. If we were at the bottom, I would be a lot more concerned. If we were 50%, the way down, I would be more concerned. But I think that is getting funded. The school system's had some tough issues to look at when they decided to close Central. They had a reduction in the number of students. When I, when we met with the school board the last time, I said, how many, how many students do you have that should go to Central that are not going to Central? And it was about 65. So 65 kids were going to school elsewhere in Haywood County that should have been going to Central. And I guarantee if those 65 kids had been going to Central, that would have been a tougher decision for them to make, to close that school. Plus, you had, over the last 10 years, a reduction of about 1,000 students in all of Haywood County. And that's something that you have to plan for. I don't like seeing Central closed. I went to Central, I went to Central, I don't know, it's a long, 37 years ago. But I think that it's a decision that they looked at and they had to make. The, I think we're talking about the animal shelter later. There's no question we have a need for an animal shelter. I mean, if you saw the one that we have, and you heard Dr. Hammett speak last week, we do need one. I'm going to reserve whether I support the amount of money that we're spending on this one. It is a significant amount of money, and I somewhat question the amount of money that we're spending on that. I certainly care about the animals, but there are other things that are important as well. And I don't know about the aesthetics and the amount of money that we should be spending All right, I think, and, you know, homelessness is certainly a problem. It is a problem, and I think Kevin spoke to it. He didn't speak to this, but I'll say his wife spends a lot of time down there, and I think Kevin does as well, in trying to help at that Pathway Center. And it is, they count on volunteers a lot. It is an unfortunate situation, not only here, but throughout this state and throughout this country. I'm not, I'm not certain, and I haven't developed an idea or opinion as to how much the government should be assisting in that. And those are my comments.
Will, you mean?
Kurt's done a great job. I want to speak to education. I've, I've seen it both ways. When I was superintendent, I remember I would get my group of people when coming here, and we didn't demand the commissioners help us, but we tried to put some general pressure on the commissioners, Mary Ann, to increase our total. And it was a battle every time. I was in here with one group of commissioners, which I won't name, I was lectured for an hour and a half. Why are you people up here asking for more money? My point is, the funding formula has worked well. It began when I was superintendent, Mark, you were on the Board, and a lot of, Kurt. The funding formula gave us a way of asking for money without competing with our other departments in the county. I think you understand, before, we were competing. You know, if you gave the sheriff so much money, then you gave the school system so much money. But we don't do that now. Ira, you probably can figure it out, might take a little while, you can figure out what the school system will get next year. And I don't want us to ever, ever get back to where the commissioners are looking at everything line item, and we are helping the school board decide what they need to cut and what they don't. We would be here forever. We've got nine board members, and they were elected, and it's their job to determine how much money. We give them a total amount of money. Is it four, what is it now, 16? Is it up?
It's 14 million.
14, 14 million. We give them 14 million, they make a decision on how they're going to spend that money. And I've looked at it, I agree with some of the things they've done, I disagree with some, so I'm sure all of you do. But again, we don't need to go back to the old way, where the commissioners are looking at line items and helping the school board decide. If we're going to do that, we don't need but one board. If we're going to do that, we don't need but one board, the way I look at it. And I think that's all I have to say on the school system. Let's don't go back to the way it was.
The other thing I would add, when you're talking about buildings, whether it be an animal shelter or whatever, when you have a public building, it has to be safe for the public, not just for the animals, but for the employees and for people who visit the animal shelter. And we heard from Dale last week, Dale Burris, our maintenance facilities director, that that building is likely an OSHA violation. So, you know, you have to take a lot of things into consideration. Safety, when the new jail was built, was a consideration. You know, if you've got liability concerns for your employees and the public, that's an issue you have to factor in, so. Okay. That concludes our comments. Bill, do you have any constituent concerns? No. Kurt?
No, I've kind of addressed those in the comments.
Yeah, Mike? Okay. All right, we'll move to an agency report. Recognize Ira Dove for a certified county clerk designation award.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, member of the public. We've heard tonight about a lot of the different types of important business that the government engages in. We've heard about several of the public comments. Some of these issues need research, a lot of these issues need some extra work. As far as writing, someone has to keep up and keep organized. And someone has to look and be trained in such things as record-keeping and a lot of the other matters. Ms. Way, who is sitting there, Candice Way, is our deputy clerk. She has achieved the county clerk's designation from the School of Government. She is one of eleven people this year who became certified clerks. This certification was developed through the School of Government. And the persons have to go down, she went down several weeks for training. She had to learn and go through rigorous exam process. And this has allowed her, and we've learned actually quite a lot as she's gone through this program, that we hope will be incorporated and make better practice in our government. So I would just simply like to take a moment in the midst of these very serious issues to acknowledge someone for reference. Thank you.
Ms. Way, very good. That's quite an achievement. We appreciate what you do for the county and for this board in keeping us straight. And that's no easy task. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any adjustment to the agenda today? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the March 7, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those?
No.
Okay, if not, then we'll move to Greg West for refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Concerning the 2016 February releases, refunds, amendments, there's nothing out of the ordinary for February.
Any questions of Greg? We've had the opportunity to review those beforehand, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, you're not Mike Matthews?
No, I'm not. Okay, I'm filling in for Mike, Jeretta Ezell, Deputy Tax Collector. According to our collections, as of February this year compared to last year, we're down just a little bit. There's several things that factor into that. But as of now, already in March, we have compensated for that, especially since the delinquent bills have been mailed out as of the first of March. So, and also the delinquencies, as you can see, that are attached. Do you have any questions on those?
Our percent of property tax levy collected, the percent appears to be down a little bit.
For February, it's down just a little bit, yeah, yeah. But we've already compensated for that in March. Delinquent bills went out the first of March, so we're already ahead of the game and have compensated for that right now.
That's no cause for concern?
So, no cause for concern, yeah.
Questions, anybody have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to just take a minute and thank Jeretta and the other staff for all the hard work they do. I know they work hard, I appreciate it.
You do. Okay, at this point, if there's no further comments, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved?
From a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We move to old business, and we're getting to the homelessness thing, folks, I promise. But we just have to go through some of the steps here. Next up is Patsy Dowling. No, I'm sorry, is Dale Burris for the Mountain Design Architects contract that we discussed in our last meeting. We approved the concept of the contract and Dale's bringing back now the contract for our official approval.
Well, good evening. I was going to let Patsy go in front of me.
I got carried away. She's a lot better looking than you are, Dale.
Yes, I'm here to request approval for the contract that was awarded to Mountain Design Architects, which is Contract B-101, 2007 AIA document. Mr. Killian's looked at it, approved the contract. Basically, it's to the point to let the commissioners approve it and begin the process of design for the project.
Okay. And is the amount of $325,000, which was an old amount, because $48,750 of that has been spent otherwise or accounted for otherwise?
That is correct. That is the portion that was appropriated for programming.
Okay. So it'll be a total of $276,250 for the budget amendment which will follow. So at this point, anybody have any questions of Dale?
Yeah, I do. And this is the area in which I was approached this week on multiple occasions about the cost of the animal shelter. And so I kind of, I want to, I don't know, Dale, if you have some comments, and you may not have some comments, you may not want to comment about it, but I'm concerned about the amount of money that we're spending on it. And I'm concerned when I see an architectural contract of $325,000. And maybe I wouldn't, and I'll have to apologize, maybe I wasn't thinking like I should two weeks ago. Maybe I don't think like I should a lot, but I'd like to ferret some of this out to know, what are we really spending our money on and how can we change this price? I want us to be able to provide a facility that complies with the requirements that we need. But I don't want to overdo this facility. I don't want to go from being in a block building to being in a really nice facility when we do have other things that are concerning. And I recognize we have a lot of people here in support of this tonight. But, you know, I've got to sit here and think about the whole county. And when I do, I wonder about the amount of money that we're spending on this. So I would like to know, is there a way to reduce this amount?
I guess you're asking.
And I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm just saying, $3.25 million is a lot of money for us to spend on animal shelter.
Well, first of all, Mr. Kirkpatrick, we don't know what that true cost is going to be. While based on the architectural design, we don't know what that true cost is going to be until we bid it out. That's just like any other project. You asked the question about what could we cut back? Well, you know, functionality is going to be the main goal of being able to make this facility to where it works for the staff that's actually at Animal Services. And of course, the groups that comes in to help with adoption of animals. One thing we found out is to be able to make the kennels that are there in place or the dog runs that's there in place now, is not going to make the new guidelines. So that's a totally different design. The kitten or the cat kennels, cages, whichever way I'd rather call them, kennels, I don't like calling anything cages. They are actually a different design, cut down on any spread of disease. You know, once you start adding all that together and you start adding in, you know, trying to move enough air that I mentioned at the last meeting, to be able to do those air changeovers. You know, the HVAC, electrical plumbing in this facility is what's driving a lot of the cost. Now, while, just like with any other facility, aesthetics can be changed on the exterior. That's not my decision to make. My decision is to, or what my job is, is to bring it back to you and say, is this what you want to do for this amount of money? But that's where you go back on, you know, trying to do some type of cutbacks if the project's awarded, once it's designed, to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So, yes, there probably is money involved there. What drove, what a big portion of the cost of design is, is actually animal arts, which is, there's two of the greatest, and one's in Texas and one's in Colorado. And animal arts, of course, is the one that was chosen for this one. They drive a lot of this cost. And because they know the specialty of a animal control facility. Interior design, so they basically do the interior design and mountain design takes that and designs around it, you know, to make the actual facade and everything look good. And we're looking at three sides of this building, more or less to look like, less of a, I don't know the term to actually use, less of a county building and more of a usage building. But that's something we can always look into as we move forward with this. If this is what the board wants to do, if they want to cut back on what the design of the exterior looks like, I don't think anybody here has ever mentioned to me that they wanted a metal building stuck up out there. If that's what they want, then by all means, we can dress up a metal building. But you've got to make that metal building itself actually function correctly. You've got to do that air changeover, you've got to make it heat, you've got to meet all the energy codes that's required today. So there's a lot involved. While there's still things that can be cut, but as far as site work, you know, it's a great site, it does actually work within itself to be able to balance the cut and fill on the site. You know, the parking is just enough to meet the requirements for a facility like that. And then, of course, you know, the drive is simply just like your, you know, two-lane drive going in and going out. I don't know if I answered your question or been able to cover everything that you asked me because I was trying to follow it without writing anything down, so I'm trying my best.
Yeah, I don't know if you answered it or not. I want to know what we can cut off of it, is what I want to know. And it sounds like you're saying there's not much of anything.
Well, I tell you what, I mean, if you're looking at cutting costs, you cut down the size of the facility, okay?
That would be my question.
You go from $10,000 to $8,000 or, you know, whatever's best to cut back on. And then you have to start cutting back on exterior design because the interior is simple. There is nothing extravagant about the interior. It's equipment, it's a concrete floor, and it's machinery walls. So there's really nothing interior that's there. I mean, you saw the glass clear story in the front. Yeah, there's some money to be saved there. That is not a two-story facility. I've been told, asked why I wanted, I brought the commissioners a facility that's two-story. It's not a two-story facility, that's a clear story that's on the front of the building, that's for aesthetics, and that's where the actual HVAC equipment will be sitting at. So there is a little, that design is in there for a reason. While we know that we'd like to put a metal roof on this facility, we found out with EMS base, you can go to shingles. Today, you could use shingles and cut back on 30% of the roof cost, okay? That's today. We don't know what metal's going to be by the time this bids out because we saw that cost change by the time EMS was designed and by the time it's bid. Did I get a little closer that time?
Yep, we got a lot closer.
Okay, thank you.
You know, my observation is until we have a design, it's hard to decide what to remove from the design. And, you know, I've been involved in building three new schools, justice center, a new jail, courthouse renovation, buildings at Tuscola, Pisgah, Johnson Valley. I don't think we've ever built Riverford School. I don't think we've ever built a building where we didn't, at the end, look at it and try to value engineer and reduce the cost to the taxpayers. Every single time, we've done that. And I don't see this being any different. I mean, you've got to look at it and find out, okay, is there a way that we can reduce the cost without affecting adversely the functionality of the building and the longevity of the building to protect the taxpayers' investment? I don't see that being any different than anything else we've ever done in terms of buildings.
One of the questions that I guess I have, and I too have had a lot of concerns with the cost. And, you know, when we first started talking about this thing about a year ago, you know, we put it out there and, you know, what we thought the cost potentially would be was not where we're looking at today. We also had hoped, and thrilled to death to see all the people here supporting the different organizations and everything, but, you know, we were all going to join together and be a partnership here and there'd be some additional fundraising to help this along. But the architecture fees, are they based on the potential cost of the building at a certain percentage? Is that how we come up with that?
They based, actually, Mountain Design, I actually spoke to them and their fees, where we originally started out with a number, you know, this is a new facility, so you're not going to see a 10% cost for a new facility. That's your renovation numbers. Their fees were based around what each individual principal underneath them were. Animal Arts being the designer for a facility such as this. You've got civil design, which is a large amount of civil design to this facility. Plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, that's a large chunk. So if you start taking and breaking those pieces out, which you see in the AIA documents, start breaking those pieces out, you see that there's not a whole lot of money going to the architect. Now, while I say that not a whole lot, not, you know, it's not 50% to the architect design company themselves. This is spread across the board to all the principals underneath them.
So due to the, you know, the building or whatever has to be in it, it just happens to have a large fee, design fee, or basically what you're saying?
Well, yeah, a lot has to do with, of course, the, you know, animal arts. And I'm not, I hope nobody thinks I'm saying anything bad towards animal arts, but this is, these companies are specialized in this, is basically where I'm trying to go at with it. So you've got a specialized company with the animal arts portion of it, the interior design. Then you've also got a civil designer that is designing the site so this facility can sit on it properly and for any expansion at any point in time. Those portions of this, there may be some offset costs. I would have to, I mean, that would be by direction of the board to go back to Mountain Design, to ask them, you know, if we cut back on the building size, does your fee cut back? I don't know that without going back to them.
From what I'm hearing, the site prep and all is, there's some expense there with the design and all that if we had been able to go where we initially wanted to go, we might not have had that expense.
The engineering fees, that's, we would still have some expense, but you do have a larger expense whenever you start doing cut and fill, that's correct.
Well, there's no question, if we'd been able to have continued our plans and put this building at the fairgrounds, I've heard estimates of savings up to a million dollars. And people with their own agendas, in my view, quite selfishly sabotaged that plan. And so we're left with what we're left with in terms of a site. Kevin?
I was just, that's what I was going to comment on. We would have saved a million dollars if we'd put it to fairgrounds because that's a shovel-ready site. We had to buy the land, we have to grade the land, and that's going to cost. If we put it at the fairgrounds, which is what we originally thought we were going to do, it would save probably close to a million dollars. And that's where the extra cost is right now, I think. And we need to value engineer. I think once we get a building designed, then we can start looking at value engineering. We do that on our buildings.
Yeah, that's a common way we do it. Yeah, that's a common, a common way we do it.
Okay, Dale, a question I have in my mind. If we scale back so many square footage in the building, can it be built to build, add on if we need the additional space without compromising how the building functions?
I think if you go ahead with the designer now, as that being the thought, if that's the case, the commissioners want to do, if that's the case, it needs to be looked at now to be added on to later.
I know we've built a lot of our schools with the intent of adding on, as you know.
Riverbend's, one of them, Clyde and Hazelwood are both set up that way, to where they could be added on, on either end, back or, back, back or either side. So that would be something that would have to be looked into now as the project progresses, if it's going to be added on to, because you've got...
We'd have to come up with a square footage we, we agree on and see what that would cost, is that right?
That's been done.
Yeah, the 10,000 square foot number is where Animal Arts came up with in their original information, that they, based on the animals, that Animal, Animal Control Service brought in. I've got that documentation here, I'm sure nobody wants me to go through a bunch of paperwork, but I do have that documentation here. They did that number based on how many animals, the staff, the amount of volunteers, and everyone else involved with this. We met with them in this commissioner room, and whenever we met out at Paragon Parkway, we had an all-day-long session with Animal Arts and the architect as well, to come up with what will work. And their analysis showed 10,000, 92 to 10,1 or something like that, is the number I'm thinking off the top of my head.
So anything smaller would, would compromise the function of the building, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm afraid that if you cut down, if you start cutting down and thinking about adding on later, it's going to just cost taxpayers more money to add on to that facility, because you've got waste, you've got domestic water, you've got electricity, you've got everything involved in that. So, yeah, you could grade the site, you could get everything prepped, but that don't mean that, you know, you've got to look at what the future expansion is going to be, where it's going to be, and have all that in place at that time.
You know, keep, keeping things in perspective, the total cost of any structure is always a big sounding number, whether it be this renovation, a justice center at 18 Megan or whatever. But for budget purposes, as Julie will tell you, it's the debt service that you have to factor in, make your payment every year, just like your house. You look at what you can afford a house payment to be, based on your revenue. And with this animal shelter, with the numbers we're guest, guessing right now, three, three and a half million dollars, you're well under $200,000 a year. Julie, is that right?
It is, for 40 years.
For 40 USDA loan. So, you know, if we, if we mess around and, you know, save a few square feet here and we knock, you know, even $100,000 off the cost of the building, it sounds like a lot of money, but it may not be $5,000 a year in your, in your payments.
Can I, can I mention one thing Julie mentioned about the USDA loan? Whenever you're using USDA, anything that you add or change to this facility, you have to go back through them as well. So keep that in mind as you start looking at, you know, if you think it's going to be, need to be added on in 40 years, it has to go back through USDA. So there, there is some guidelines involved in that.
I think this board has been very proactive in the past in building for what's needed now and keeping an eye toward future generations so that we don't, you know, find ourselves in the same predicament 10 years down the road, when construction costs are higher, maybe the cost of borrowing money's higher, and you lose all that quality service to the county residents. So I think we need to, to think about that.
Can I, can I interject one thing? I can tell you that plywood has went up 48% in the last 60 days. That's just to give you an idea. And that's just standard plywood for roof sheeting. So those numbers are escalating at, you know, as we stand here and speak right now, those numbers are still going up. You know, as a general contractor, as electrical contractor, I see these numbers. And I know that with the new EMS base that we're under contract with right now, with John Bergen Construction, the same scenario, he's trying to lock in his prices with the
Any other questions?
Is there, do we have, you know, the county has a couple buildings, are any of those buildings, in your opinion, because you, suitable to place this animal shelter?
No.
Okay, and, and that, that's been vetted and, and looked at?
Yes, sir, we have looked at the, the other facilities and the cost to actually renovate any of those facilities to meet the requirements, to be able to put an animal control facility would be more than building a new one.
Okay. If we get, if we enter into this contract, are we bound by paying this lump sum of 325,000 year regardless of whether we build the structure that they come up with or not?
No, the payments are, the payments are staggered, they're not, Dale knows more about that than I do, but no, at any point in time, you can terminate the contract.
So we can get the schematic design, they're going to get 15% for the schematic design?
Then 20% for design development phase, then you got your construct, it's, it's broken out by percentage in each portion of this.
So, so we can get a, a design, schematic design for a portion of the 325?
That's 15%.
We have something to look at and potentially go out for...
That does not get, no, that does not get, until you get design development phase, that does not get your specifications written. That's...
How much more is that?
That's another 20%, so you're 35%.
35%. So roughly $100,000, rough numbers.
I'll, I'll agree, because I...
Little bit more, probably.
Kevin, do you have any comments? Well, we can nickel and dime this thing all day. I, I think we need to go ahead and get a design, and then we, you know, value engineer it like we do every other building that we build. I mean, I've, I've been through a score of these, and we, we haven't had this kind of discussion about the design. We design a building, and then we look at ways to, to make it more economical and more functional. And I know there's some in our community who don't want anything to do with a, with a quote "dog pound." This isn't a dog pound, it's animal services, there's lots of other things that animal services do. You know, infectious outbreaks with rabies and, and public health and, and lots of things. And, you know, we don't, we don't scrutinize our other projects, have not scrutinized our other projects at, at this stage of the development, like we're doing this. I think we need to just move on, and, and at the end of the design, we can look at it, like we do every other project, and see if we can save $5,000 a year. But you're only, you're not even talking about $200,000 a year in debt service.
I think the issue with that, though, is that, that it's five here and 10 there and 20 there, and we've got to watch every thousand dollars if you don't, then, then, I mean, you just end up...
But I'm just trying to put it in perspective as to what we're talking about. And we're, we're, we're putting this project through a scrutiny that we don't put other projects through.
Well, I, I, I'm just doing that because I'm getting, I'm getting a number, they want $325,000 lump sum for architectural fees for the, for the facility, and it concerns me.
Yeah, well, that's, and you're right to address it if it does.
You know, at this time, with, our interest rates are as low as they're ever going to be, we might as well say that. They're only going to be, going back up, and this is a good time to be doing a project. And, you know, the cost is there because we couldn't put it at the fairgrounds. I mean, that's, that's really the bottom line. If we could put it at the fairgrounds, we could have had, you know, we would have saved a million dollars, and we, we've had to, you know, we've had to come up with that extra bit. I, I think we need to build an animal shelter that's going to last for generations to where they're not having this conversation 20 years from now. If you build it too small, or inadequately to start with, or just to get by, then we're going to be adding on in the future. And I think, you know, we, we need to, to think about that. As far as the building goes, I know it looks like a grand building, but I had hoped that we can get our community together and help with some of the costs, and I don't think they're going to do it for a building that looks like an institutional building. I think it needs to look, you know, like a, a nice building, just for, you know, for the county. It's going to be a county building, but it doesn't need to look like a county building. I think it needs to be looked, looked at as a welcoming area, as someone alluded to for when, you know, when people come in to adopt animals, that they'll have something that, and, and the county can be proud of it. But cost, you know, building costs are going up, it's like Dale was talking about. I was talking to somebody the other day, concrete, I think, has been going up quite a bit, the, the cost of concrete, and the cost, I, I know I buy rebar because I use that, and it, it goes up every time, it's, it's astounding what, what it goes up. The longer we put this off, the more it's going to cost, I think, in the long run. And my experience in building construction is that's what you need to do, is get it, get it going as soon as you can, that way you're locked in, like, like John Bergen's trying to do with their EMS station. Our Justice Center is coming off, we're going to be paying it off next year. That's a $23 million project, Justice Center and Parking Deck. And I can remember when they were discussing that, how that was going to be a Taj Mahal and, you know, different things. And I probably even participated in some of that, because I thought it was a lot of cost, but I am glad that we, I'm glad the building's there, and we've only got it paid for. You know, we've, we've, and it's a building that, we can have several courts in there now. So I, I just think we need to, I think we need to go ahead and get, you know, get the building going, get it under construction, do some value engineering, we always do that. I know when we built our, the building on Paragon Parkway, the, the roof looked like copper, but it was just a painted metal roof, I believe Dale. Looks good. Everybody was talking about the fancy rock work, that's all fake. That's fake rock. It looks really good, it was fairly, you know, fairly inexpensive. But we got condemned for that, but, you know, the building looks like, it looks like a nice building, it's, it's a nice county building. I think when people come to our community, I, I think how our buildings look reflect on that. If you ever go to Madison County, I went over there, their registered deeds was in a, shopping, was in an old Bilo building, or Ingalls building, I guess it was a Bilo's building, and they were running dehumidifiers to keep the moisture out because the books were in there. And I just, you know, I, when you, when you go to other counties, I, I just think, you know, our county, we need to be setting an example and, and have buildings that we can be proud of, and that, you know, that'll serve us for generations. And we've done that, this board has done that. I mean, I don't need to name all the projects we've done, you know, since 2002, there's a, you know, several major buildings because we've kept, we kept putting it off, and it's kind of got up to the point now where we need to do something, and we need to take care of our buildings. And our debt today is less than it was in 2008, and that includes the animal shelter and the EMS base. You know, don't you wish Washington DC could say the, the debt's less than it was in 2008 up there? You know, they can't do that, but we can, because we were proactive, we got these buildings built, generations are going to be taken care of. And I believe the animal shelter is part of that, it's the last part that we're working on. If, if somebody wants to run for commissioner and say that they're not going to build any more buildings, they can say that, because we've done our job, we've taken care of our county, and it'll be taken care of for generations. So that'd be my comments.
And you talked about fundraising, you know, you've got to get a design before people are going to contribute money. They're not going to contribute to a pig and a poke. I know we've got one commitment here recently for $100,000. And, you know, those, those kinds of folks are out there, but we've got to get a design to show them something before we, they are going to part with their, their money and make donations. So I, I believe we just, we need to move forward.
Well, what about this, then? I didn't, I didn't know that the, the community was going to invest in it, or considered investing in it. And if that is the case, why, why don't, when we're looking at this design, you know, we, we need to have the functionality part of it. I'm not opposed to the, the structure being 10,000 square feet, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to going ahead and building something, I think that's, that's wise construction. I'm, I'm opposed to aesthetically pleasing part of this. So if there are private donations, maybe when, when this thing is designed, it can be designed in such a way where we can say, okay, well, we can do this, it can look this much better if these donations are going to come in. If they're not, then it's going to look like this. And we, we make a functional building, or, or construct a functional building that complies with all the requirements and meets our space needs. I mean, that, that...
What you're going to find with the contributions, they are usually specific as to interest that that person has. It may be outfitting medical rooms, it may be other things that are, that would be an expense to the county, but it's their money and they can, unless it's just a general contribution with no strings attached, and, and you may get some of those, but I know the one that just came in is very specific as to what it's for. I'm not at liberty to talk about that.
I think my vision, at least my vision was that we, we, we put the bones up in the building, and then hopefully we can get donations to furnish the building on the inside. That's what my hope was from the animal rescue groups, was that, you know, that we can work together to maybe help furnish the building and make it what it needs to be. And I also want to partner with the, I think we need to have a public-private partnership with these groups for adoption. You know, they already do that anyway, especially with the care. I know they, they go down, Doyle will probably tell you that they, a lot of people spend the time to go down and help him out, help the staff out. If it wasn't for that, we'd probably have to have a lot more staff members. But my, my vision was that our animal rescue groups was going to help us, you know, maybe we can even name rooms or something in there, or kennel, I don't know, I don't know, you know. I, I foresaw, my vision was to, was that we would have groups or, or individuals donate in such a way that we could do that, in the, in the adoptions, I think. They can save us a lot, and they already do money on that, on staffing the adoption center.
So, but I mean, it doesn't sound like you're necessarily, you're necessarily opposed to that idea, you're just saying, I mean, at this point, nobody's opposed to that, that we start looking at it and say, what can these private donors give money for?
That's always been the plan, as far as I was aware.
They were involved, they were actually, the groups were actually involved, volunteer groups were, whenever we picked the architect, and so...
I mean, I, there, there's a great deal of support, of support in the community as far as the animal, I wouldn't say animal lovers, but the people who support animals. Matter of fact, I, I was driving, I forget where I was driving, oh, I was going to a deposition in Greenville last week, and I passed, I bet there were eight trucks, Star Ranch trucks, I know those are horses, but the animals, on the interstate headed, I guess somewhere to save the horses and bring them back. So, I mean, you know, I thought, those people are taking their time and money, and, and people will do that with this as well. I'm speaking on the side of making sure for the Haywood County taxpayers that we control this project, meet a need that is, that is, that is clear, but do so and, and manage this money the best we possibly can. That's what I'm asking for. Because I, there is a lot of concern about the money on this situation. And I see Mike nodding his head down there, and Mike takes the brunt of it every day, Jim Day at his place, I know he does. A lot more than I do.
Mr. Patrick, I think you know me well enough to know that I'm very conservative with construction. And I watch everything that goes through as a building's being constructed. So I'm going to do everything I possibly can to make sure that happens. Now, while I'm not the decision maker to end, it's what this building looks like. As far as functionality, that's, that's kind of my standpoint of where I would be at. I'm not very good at aesthetics, but I know that other people are.
The aesthetics comes down to the very last thing, just about when you're talking with the contractor, and when you're looking at a, a completely designed building, aesthetics, I mean, roof lines can be changed very easily, can they not?
That is correct.
Yeah. Anything else?
Dale, one more question. The, the 3.2 would represent a good price if we could get it, is that right?
Are, are you saying 3.2?
I'm talking about the cost of the building, the total cost.
You know, while I'd love to be able to throw that number out there to you right now, I don't know by the time this, by the time we meet these milestones, what that cost is actually going to be.
What worries me, and I've worked in building material, this, wood's not going to come down, the price of any wood products. So, so this price of 3.2 is going to go up, so I guess the board at some time will have to determine, has it gone up too far?
Well, the biggest majority of this facility is metal and machinery, so... So, you know, you got your roof deck, and that's where you run into most of the wood at, so keep that in mind. Machinery is where the, the biggest majority of the construction cost is, it and concrete as well.
Yeah, bear in mind, we're talking about a $325,000 design cost, 48,750 of that is already gone, so you're talking about an additional $276,000. So, I think everybody's had their say. At this point, I'd entertain a motion that the contract for the design of the new animal services building with Mountain Design Architects, in the amount of 325,000, noting that 48,750 has, has already been budgeted from the, for this, this, uh, project to be approved.
Someone?
Is there a second? Okay, ball's in your court then, no second. I'll second it, I'm allowed as chairman. Motion and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Why don't you, why don't we discuss this a little bit more before you call that? 'Cause I'm, I, I want to see this project move forward, I don't wanna not see it move forward.
We just seem to be in a circle, but we're right back where we, I mean, we've talked about it, and talked about it, and we're the circle, I guess we can continue to talk about it, but I don't know what else is new, but I'm certainly willing to listen.
When they, when they come back with these designs, the initial designs, will we know at, at that point, Dale, I mean, we'll get a good idea about our cost in this?
Our numbers will be run through RS Means, and RS Means is a construction estimating software that actually allows a percentage, you can actually add in a percentage for, let's say you put it off for six months. I don't think there's anybody in this room who wants to put it off six months after it's designed. So, that being the case, then when you start looking at that, those numbers are there. And they're, as we've seen here lately, they've been really close. Now, while they're off 10 and 12%, that's still close in the construction industry this day. It's not like building a house where you can, you can pretty well put a number on it. I wished I could give you a dead-set number, but until it's designed, and the equipment is a, you know, everybody decides on the type of equipment's going in, it's furnishing's going there, 'cause USDA is gonna require this, they're, they're gonna require this architect to give them a number that's within a certain percentage, I, I wanna say two and a half percent, does that sound, I, I can't remember, it's been five years ago since I've, I've worked on one of these with USDA.
On the, on this design part again, you know, we, we talked about 35% to get it to where it can be looked at.
That's correct.
Strongly. Now, is that, is the 46,000 we've already paid, is that part of the 35%?
That's part of your first 15%.
So, so we're well into that 35%?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, we can at least-
Doing the numbers in my head, I, I don't have those numbers, I'm not, I don't have a calculator, so doing the numbers in my head.
We, we at least get something to really look at, and to be able to throw out there and start getting some solid numbers.
Not until you get, that's-
35%.
Back to where I was at, until you get through a schematic design and get the contract documents that has a set of specifications with it, there's no way.
35%.
'Cause, no, that number, let me, just a second.
Okay.
The construction documents phase is gonna put you at 60, 75%.
So, you're almost done with it?
That's on, uh-
You can't, you can't determine costs until you know what you're pricing. And this software you're talking about is the same software that the construction companies use to make their bid.
That's, that's correct.
And they're, you know, they don't, they're not gonna make it based on a 50 or 60%. We can't do it on a 50 or 60%, we have to have, you know, accurate information in order to have a good estimate.
Now, the specifications, I mean, while you may have a, a large 30-page set of drawings, the specification's gonna be 170, 180, even up to 200 pages, to set this up, that, to set each individual section of the construction of the project. So, that's a large portion of it.
Any other comments?
Then you make your final decision, really. That's when you get your numbers and you make the final decision.
That's when you got your estimated cost, and that's whenever you can actually decide to go out and bid for the project.
Right, or value engineer the cost down if it's higher than you think it should be, that's when you do that.
That's correct.
And you know what you can change.
So, what I'm hearing, that we're gonna have to find 300, well, I know we found some, we've paid some already, 26,000, whatever it is, we're gonna have to eventually pay 325,000 before we can determine the cost of the building, is that right? Before we can get any idea, I guess that's where I have to hang up a-
Probably, probably your number's probably looking, if you're looking at where you can determine the cost, the estimated cost for the facility, you're probably looking at about 250, 260.
But that's no different than any other building.
And that's just throwing the numbers off the top of my head, I, I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm standing here in front of you, looking at-
Yeah, and we don't mean to put you on the-
That's okay, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, you, you spend design fees in every building you build. I mean, this isn't any different than the justice center?
I don't think anybody's saying it's any different, I know it's the same thing, I know we're spending what we're spending.
Anything else? We have a, a motion and a second. No other comments, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Pardon?
Can I speak?
No, no, sir.
I'm good, we don't know what it's cost, we don't need, right? I'm sorry?
We, this is a business meeting, we've had the public comment session, we've had, everybody's had the opportunity, so we're gonna move ahead.
We're not the bad, that's a patient vote.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
You're calling the vote, I can't, you know-
Well, I mean, we gotta vote sometime.
I know we have to vote, but I'm still, I still wanted to talk about it. I mean, I, I don't care if I, if I vote right now, I could vote next week, and vote, two weeks from now, and vote yes, but I, I mean, I don't have, how much of this 350, 325,000, we spent 48,000 already, do we have to spend before we're gonna get a good idea of how much money we're gonna have to spend on this?
If you want to have true numbers on it, you're looking at 75% of 325,000, there's your math.
Mr. Chairman, we have about one minute on the desk.
Okay, then we'll call a, a brief recess. Now, I'm, I'm sorry for all you folks that showed up, we're, this, these are legitimate concerns that folks have, and we need to talk it through. We'll go, we'll take a recess for just a few minutes while they change the tape and the, and the camera.